I'd like to call the meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask you to rise and salute the flag with me.
I.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a roll call, please.
Kilcey, absent, Mr. Mayen.
Here.
Evenasia.
Here.
Mr. Hetrick.
Here.
Maria Zapsin, Mr. Baylen.
Here.
Ms. Minson.
Here.
Mr. Weitzman.
Here.
Mr. Lynch.
Here.
Mr. Semra.
Here.
Mr. Pasternak is absent, Mr. Henry.
Here.
And Mr. Fong, which is here.
Notices of this meeting has been provided through resolution adopted by the mayor and council on December sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four at its regular meeting of the mayor and town council at the Booton Town Hall, one hundred Washington Street, Booton, New Jersey, and by electronic mailing to the citizens of Mars County in the Delaware Record Newspapers, through posting on the town website and by filing a copy of same in the town clerk. Members of the public were also permitted to submit written comments prior to meeting via mail or email, which will be read during the public comment period. All public comments, whether during the public portion of the meeting or submitted beforehand, shall be limited to no greater than three minutes in duration. At this point, we'll start off with various committee and liaison reports, beginning with our administrator, Neil Henry.
Thank you, Mayor. In addition to what is on your agenda for this evening, the following key items have been addressed by the administrator's office since the May nineteenth council meeting. Work continues with the zoning office, prepare for a meeting to review our demolition code and see how we can tighten it up. That subcommittee is scheduled to meet on June fifth for further discussion. I did reissue an RFP for our general engineering services. Those proposals are due back in my office on June twenty-fourth at ten thirty a.m. I also updated, also purchased new hardware for our punch-in and punch-out devices for employees to use. These will be compliant with new software our timekeeping system uses. Work with the town's water engineers to put together, continue to putting another streamlined process which covers logistics as well as finances for the state mandated lead line program. And I began an analysis of rental rates to determine a fair monthly rent amount for town-owned properties currently being rented. And as typically the case, continued work on managing matters related to the various items of personnel and our litigation. And that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from Minister Henry?
Yeah, just one, Neil. Could you remind you sharing some of an update on the effort that you and I have been talking a lot about trash collection around town? And I know you've been working on that, so just would love to, if you wouldn't mind, a quick update on that.
Happy to do that. Zeke and I did talk before the meeting, so Zeke want me to take them?
I'm happy to defer it to the DPW if that's...
I'm...
Either way.
I'm coming up right next.
Great. I'll hold the question for about forty-five seconds.
The only thing I've got to say.
Okay. I'll hold the question.
Anyone else?
Mr. Henry, how many town-owned properties do we run out?
One.
One, okay, great.
One that we collect money for.
Okay.
Okay, moving on. DPW, council member Baylen.
Thank you, Mayor. Last Monday, the DPW committee met. I was absent, however, in conferring with Administrator Henry. I think the two items of significance are progress made on the reorganization and cleanup of the DPW, which is meant to improve use for our public. We also did, after the passage of the trailer amendment, we'll be implementing that, so our next meeting, we'll have more update on that. And then to the trash item collection, I think what we want to stay publicly is that we'll be tightening up our enforcement of abuse of trash collection. So everyone is doing a great job, continue what you're doing. Thank you.
I think Zeke, if I may add one more comment, I think to summarize Zeke's feedback on that, there will be more eyes looking at for impressions regarding trash.
Great. Any comments or questions for council members?
Is this specifically about the trash on Main Street?
Not just Main Street, no.
I think Main Street, Plain Street are some of the biggest offenders, if you will.
Are we still looking into making sure there is proper trash storage for those residents?
We talked about that at our previous meeting. I think we need to get back with zoning code enforcement, make sure that's done.
Yeah, I'd like to make sure we're, that's all up to snuff before we, you know, potentially start finding anyone who might not have another option.
Yeah.
I think, I think that's right. I think, though, if I may.
Please.
I think there's, there are clear regulations about when trash is allowed to be put out in advance of pickup, and I think there's been a lot of trash that's being put out significantly earlier than that, and that's, then wind comes and rats come and whatever else, and things get spread around.
I think there's a long, a more longstanding issue of the Main Street, public and residential trash, and this is a more recent kind of explosion of abuse, yeah.
Is there exploration into perhaps requiring containers? Because I noticed I was walking the other day and there's all plastic bags out on Main Street. It's almost like an invitation to the critters to have a field day. That's something I brought up when, and the Administrator I talked about.
Our compliance officer suggested we take a look at the ordinance and update the ordinance to require those containers.
I'm thinking it'd be a part of our subcommittee meeting related to the demolition stuff that on Thursday as well.
Be great.
Add it to that.
Is, is there been any additional frequency of pickup along the public receptacles on Main Street? I mean, yesterday I was leaving a coffee shop and I noticed that it was quite full and overflowing, you know, it was a Sunday and, you know, all that, but, you know, I think that, you know, at least, at least for the public receptacles that are outside of, you know, certain eateries, that maybe we should be paying closer attention to how frequently that trash is picked up. And I know that that was been part of a previous discussion. I just wanted to know if we pursued it any further.
To my knowledge, we have not increased frequency in the last year on Main Street. With the new contract, we have had our code enforcement, our town staff ensuring that actually those collections are occurring as, as in our contract, so that has been verified. But in relation to this issue, I don't think there's been any increase.
So we do in our solid waste collection contract, we do have, I think it's thirteen or fourteen receptacles that they're required to pick up at least twice a week, if not every time they're in town. I understand that that's been being done, but you'll get that one off on certain spots on Main Street where you've got potential, I'll call it, residents using, using that as their... And so what Bob, what the DPW tries to do is to go and, and one-off those and pick them up so they're not unsightly, but we don't want to get into a habit where we're doing that on a regular basis. So that ties back then to this process that Zeke mentioned too. We start kicking that up a little bit and start to issue summonses on a more frequent basis. I think the message will, I think things will improve.
I guess I would say mostly, I think, thinking about places where members of the public are using public receptacles. It's not residential trash, but they are filling up more rapidly than we are emptying them. And whether, and is DPW looking at those and are they, are they addressing it?
They're supposed to be. If they're not, please let me know and I'll make sure it happens.
Okay, great, thank you.
Moving on to library, did you have some?
Is there any sort of timeline, Zeke, for the reorg of DPW site?
End of the year. To complete the, for the, the action items, relocating all the trailer storage to the north end of the yard to free up that space near the future Tressel Bridge, pedestrian bridge. And the timeline that was discussed at our previous meeting was end of the year.
Thank you.
Everybody set? Okay, moving on, library, council member Minson.
We had a brief meeting. Just a few things coming up for the library. Grace Notes Backyard Concert, I believe, is this Sunday. The Photography Club has started up, and also the Mobility Club. Those are some things that are being highlighted by the library. Please continue to visit their website. They've got a lot of fun things coming down the pipe, particularly for summertime. There's been some questions about whether or not some of the, the changes with regards to the, you know, sort of library organizations at the federal level, if any of those changes are gonna have trickle-down effects. And as of right now, they are not. Our library is doing really well. Financially, they're very healthy and making a lot of prudent decisions, but they are, you know, just alert to the fact that there are some changes kind of happening on the national level. And so we're just, you know, in continued kind of just preparedness for that. But, you know, as we continue to go on with our business, we've got bids in for our new shelving, blinds, interior storm windows have been put in, backyard lighting has been updated, and there's been updating to the HVAC. So the facility is just continuing to just be taken care of and improved. And there is gonna be a new website live by the end of this June, so lots of positive things happening over at the library. And that's my report.
Thank you. Any comments or questions for council member Minson? Seeing none, we'll move on to council member Minson, Booton Main Street.
Similarly, Booton Main Street's just continuing to, to do beautiful things for Booton. We had our Farmers Market, which opened in May. It was an incredible first day. Our library has signed up every month to do for Saturdays, and so that, that kind of cohesion of these different organizations coming together from Booton Main Street to work at Farmers Market, it just continues to draw crowds. They've had a wonderful first week turnout and the following weeks have been great as well. For June, we are doing music on Main. It's a street closure. There's going to be bands, library popcorn, yard games, alfresco dining. Please, everybody, make it out on Friday. We have a ribbon cutting on, for Broadfoot on Sunday as well, and all of our events are being updated on Montclair Girl, Macaroni Kid, and NJ Family. So our, our events continue to get just more word and more publicized. Lauren Mills continues to do a wonderful job with her social media. And we have, we are in conversation with a group to bring the Italian Feast San Gennaro to Booton in September. So that's something that we're exploring. We don't have any, you know, final word on that, but that's just something that we're cooking up to see if we can continue to drive foot traffic to Main Street. That's my report.
Thank you. Any comments or questions, council member Minson? Seeing none, we'll move on to Housing Authority.
Mayor, if there's anything, I don't know if there's anything that we as a council can do to help support getting that festival, that food festival here, but if there's some sort of resolution of support or anything like that from this council, I certainly would be in support. I can at least be myself, but I would certainly be in support of that. So I don't know if that's helpful or not, or productive.
Certainly, certainly. We're in the early stages of the conversation, but I think what I want to emphasize is that this is a committee that's really continuing to, to go the extra mile to see how we can bring people to our Main Street, to, to visit our businesses and to make this, you know, a desirable and lively place to visit. So I'm just constantly impressed by the leadership there.
Regarding the San Gennaro, the initial inquiry came to me and I directed it to, actually, it came to me from one of the board members for Booton Main Street. And I said, look, see if Booton Main Street will run with this. They sent me a picture of this. There was like eight thousand people there. I don't know if we have the capability to handle it, but it's certainly an opportunity worth exploring. Housing Authority Liaison, council member Evenasia.
Okay, so Housing Authority met last Wednesday. It was a very brief meeting. Of note is new regulations regarding how close mulch can be next to buildings, conflict of interest policy that's required by HUD. They're still negotiating a rental lease agreement for, for office space in the Chestnut Street area. And the big thing, which has, I think, been also presented to Public Safety Director Gurney was a request that there be a speed bump on Plain Street because not necessarily for people who are going to the DPW yard, but for people who use Plain Street as a bypass for Main Street, that it generates traffic. And there's a perception that, that perhaps the traffic should be calmed. So that's a request that we'll be looking at in the next police committee.
Any comments or questions for council member?
I just got a quick one.
Yeah.
The Housing Authority is looking for office space for themselves?
No, they, they, there's a lease agreement between the, the, I don't remember the exact shape of the whole thing, but it has to do with their space within, within one of the buildings on Chestnut, if I recall correctly. And if you need more clarification, I can reach out to Cherry and I can get, I can get more details for you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. But it has to do with their space in that complex.
Thank you. Council member Wukelski is not here tonight, but I do have a couple of comments about the fire department. Last week, I attended a, a training session hosted by the fire department at the Booton Avenue Firehouse where it was presented by Matt Sullivan, who's a Booton resident or formerly a Booton resident, who's a helicopter pilot with state police. It's pretty informative, pretty informative. There were departments from other towns helped them to learn how to handle an event and what type of event would require helicopter systems from state police. It's pretty interesting. Unfortunately, it was a rainy night, otherwise there's going to be a helicopter landing on the high school, which was the cool factor that got a lot of people there. One other issue.
Sort of hoplin in the helicopter on the, he did that for the aviation academy.
One other item of note is the fire department's twenty-seven-year-old ladder truck is up for replacement. We approved bonding of a very significant number. I'd rather not say it out loud again, but it's a big number. And one of the manufacturers had a presentation down in Liberty Corner last Thursday. I'd opportunity to go down there and see the equipment. The quality and the technology is amazing. The truck committee really did their homework. They shopped around, cut back a little bit what they wanted, and the original number that they had indicated would cost has now been reduced by about a hundred fifty thousand dollars. So it's a big number, just take my word for it, but they did do their homework. Moving on, we have a number of items of correspondence, starting one with a letter of resignation for Carl Dula, our animal control officer. He has tendered his resignation. There's really no need for discussion on it, so I would call for a motion to accept regretfully Carl's resignation.
So moved, Mia.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. It's apparently there's a trend going here. We also have a letter of resignation from Susan Chara from the Green Team. We'll note, assuming this is accepted, that we have a replacement on a consent agenda tonight. So I would, there's really no need for discussion on this either. I would call for a motion to accept Susan's resignation with regret.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next up is a letter from Booton Pride, signed by Linda Hugaboom and Lindsay Weisman, basically asking for two items. Number one, they would like to have a flag raising at either one or two locations in town or both locations. They're also asking for a proclamation in honor of Pride for the month of June. We have a flag ordinance that prohibits or specifies...
Oh, just sorry, mayor, before, I just want, I know there's been some concern raised about my participation in this discussion, but I just want to ask Mr. Semro if it's appropriate for me to participate in this discussion and vote.
Mr. Weisman, by, my, my opinion would be that it would be best for you to recuse because you have a family member that made the request, and it would be better to, to not participate in this matter for that reason. That would be my advice there from that standpoint.
All right, so given that, I'm gonna recuse from this, very reluctantly recuse from this conversation. I think that...
You would step down?
Something in the consent agenda as well you're concerned about?
Yeah, I'll be...
That's fine. I just want to make sure or not.
I've got a couple, I've got a couple. I'm getting my steps in tonight. All right.
So I'll, I'll start a little bit. There was two requests. Basically, a request to fly, have a flag raising for the Pride flag on one of two locations on town property, or both perhaps, and a request for a mayoral, excuse me, a mayor and council proclamation in honor of Pride for the month. We have a flag ordinance in place that specifies what flags may be placed on town property. Our council has advised that this would be in violation of that and basically make the proclamation, excuse me, the ordinance moot. The other issue as it relates to the proclamations, since I became mayor, I took over a, from an administration that basically the culture up here was, was described as tops. And what I've tried to do is keep our focus on running the town, providing services, maintaining, upgrading infrastructure, and controlling costs. One way I felt that was appropriate was not to do any proclamations. And you may have noticed that although there was opportunity to dozens of proclamations between January of twenty-four, when I took office, we haven't done a single proclamation for any issue or cause other than for a few individuals who performed meritorious service. So I intend to stick to my guns. I've been advised by our legal counsel that proclamations are at the discretion of the mayor, and I'm gonna stick to my policy that had in place since January first of two thousand twenty-four, not to do any proclamations. So I would call for a motion to accept this letter without any further action.
Second, Mia.
Can you vote? Back and forth. All in favor?
Aye.
No.
No.
Okay. Nays?
Yeah, no.
Okay.
I, I, I think that...
Motion was made. You know, you have your opportunity during the council discussion.
Is there dissenting opinion? In a vote? Is that not a thing?
Well, that, from a legal perspective, that's registered by the fact that there was a no vote. That's, that you're technically, to answer your question, that's a dissenting opinion.
Okay. So I, I just want to clarify here because the letter in the very first...
We accepted the letter into our records.
Okay, so my, did my no vote say that I did not accept the letter into the record? Because I do accept the letter, but what I'm disputing is that they're also requesting a discussion which did not occur.
Yeah, that's kind of...
And so if, 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 if the, if my no vote indicates that I am not in support of accepting this letter into our minutes, then I would like to change my vote.
I, I think the record can simply reflect that, that you're, you are, the motion was to accept the letter into the record without any further action, and I think you, you've made it clear, and I would, would imagine that you're saying you accept the letter for the correspondence, but you're not, you're not agreeing with the action.
Yeah, we would like the further action on that.
Next piece of correspondence is from our fire department. They asked, in relation to the Labor Day celebration, they'd like permission to use Main Street for the parade on Saturday, August thirtieth, with the rain date of Monday, September first. They'd like permission to host annual fireworks display during the celebration. They'd like permission to sell alcohol beverages on high school property. The use of vehicles and employees, well, excuse me, use of employees or vehicles for Department of Public Works for preparation, servicing of athletic field before, during, and after celebration. Vehicles will only be used by fire department personnel. They will only be used within limits of town, and they request DPW assistance during cleanup. Additionally, they request assignment of police officers to direct traffic during, before, during, and after parade, along with one police vehicle to leave the parade. And with a motion to open this up for discussion.
So moved, Maureen Evenasia.
Second.
Anybody care to talk about it?
It's a fabulous, it's a fabulous tradition, and, and Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm pleased that you saw fit to read this letter in its entirety, after having not read the previous letter.
I didn't read the whole thing.
Well, you read the gist of it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the consent agenda, Resolution twenty-five dash one thirty-seven to twenty-five dash one forty-nine, gonna motion open this up for discussion.
Senator Minson.
Second, Weisman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Was there any big concern you had there?
Yeah. So question, I discuss, Resolution twenty-five dash one forty-five, this is the fair share housing, the round four housing. So I guess my questions for the attorney, you know, on this, where I understand, there's a particular property I'm concerned about, which was included in a prior round of affordable housing. And I understand that given the way these things work, that, that there's sort of carryover. What I want to make sure is if we approve this tonight, this in no way, and a couple of questions related to the same thing, and it's not gonna surprise anyone, I'm talking about Park Woods here, but number one, is there anything in our approval of this that empowers the Park Woods developer to continue to have leverage over the town of Booton?
If I may answer, the answer is no. There's nothing in this document that would change the status of the Park Woods project or, or any of their legal standing.
All right, and so I understand that with the planning board that there's legal action, we heard about a potential settlement. I know there's likely to be, I guess, another hearing, a Whispering Woods hearing.
Correct.
And there's, this, our approval of this in no way is something that that developer can bring to the planning board and say, essentially, you have to approve this because the council just approved the round four affordable housing.
That, that's correct. There's nothing here that would change the status or in any way put Park Woods in a different, a different type of status. And to that end, this is to approve the town's fourth round affordable housing plan. That's for the next ten years as to what plans or projects would be part of the town's plan. And it's important to note that there are no new projects in this plan. The real centerpiece of the plan is related to the affordable housing that's already existing on Plain Street, the federal affordable housing. And what the, the town and the governing body has done is made that the centerpiece of already existing affordable housing units and obtaining credit for it under the law. But so in no way is Park Woods part of that fourth round plan of what you would be considered to affirm today.
So the only reason that Park, the only way Park Woods is even peripherally related to this is because it was in a prior round?
Yes, historically, it would be referenced because in the third round, it was mentioned under what's known as unmet needs, sort of a secondary-type project. It was identified as a possibility.
Yes, and legally, there's no way that we can somehow remove or go back on that idea of that being an unmet need, even though we've met our obligations.
It's not as if you could go back and reopen that or, or change that status.
Correct. Yes, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else have comments or questions on the consent agenda?
No.
Seeing none, we'll pose a discussion and call for roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Weisman?
Yes, I'm gonna vote no on Resolution twenty-five, one forty-five.
We've got two additional resolutions that were outside of the consent agenda.
Well, I'm gonna do them separately. Much for a lot of it.
Okay.
Because I gotta...
Oh, okay, all right.
Resolution twenty-five dash fifty, one fifty, Resolution authorizing renewal of liquor license for Booton Elks Club, Inc.
So, Mayor, given my, my role as the president of the Booton Elks, I've been advised I need to recuse myself from this one as well.
Please get some more steps.
Oh, yeah, really? I need a...
Oh, wait a minute, Van is the president?
I don't think they call you a president, Van. Now, are, are Elks members also not?
No, if you are a member, it's okay to participate, but if you're in a leadership role, that's the distinction where you should recuse.
Thanks for clarifying.
I would get, call for a motion to open this up for town council discussion.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody have any concerns with this?
I'd say if you're not an Elk, join the Elks.
Then can we get a roll call, please? How about a motion to adopt it? I'm sorry.
So moved, Evenasia.
Second, Mia.
Baylen?
Yes.
Evenasia.
Yes.
The metric?
Yes.
The mean?
Yes.
Yes. Right, no, Mr. Lynch.
Yes.
Accused himself.
Come on back.
There you go.
Resolution twenty-five dash one fifty-one, Resolution authorizing the renewal of liquor license for EKM Liquors, Liquor Outlet. I can get a motion to open this up for council discussion.
So moved. Baylen?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any comments or questions on this resolution?
Nope.
Okay, can we get a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved, Minson.
Second, Baylen.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
The metric?
Yes.
The mean?
Yes.
Yes. The Weisman?
Yes.
Maryland.
Yes. We'll move on to unfinished business. Ordinance eleven dash twenty-five, public hearing proposed, proposed adoption in accordance with the town of Booten fixing salaries and wages of certain officers and employees of the town of Booten, County Morris, State of New Jersey for the year two thousand twenty-five. Can I get a motion to open this up for a public hearing?
So moved. Evenezia.
Second, Liam.
All in favor?
Aye.
At this point, I would, uh, open the floor up for any member of the public wishing to come forward, discuss this ordinance and this ordinance alone. Seeing none, I'll close the public, uh, section and call for motion to open up for town council discussion.
So moved.
Second, Valen.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any members of the council have, uh, concerns or comments I'd like to make on this ordinance?
I'll just take the opportunity to thank the members of our town hall and in our, in our, in our town employees who work really, really hard for this town. So, and Neil, under your leadership, but it's, we, we're very lucky in this town to have the people we have. And I thank you for your support.
Uh, just for the record, um, was there any change in the range for mayor or council members?
Uh, every change they could be involved, so I don't believe there was.
Uh. So no, yeah, thank you. Thank you.
There was not.
Okay, then I would call for motion to move ordinance eleven dash twenty-five forward.
So moved, Valen.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Valen?
Yes.
Yes.
Hetrick?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Minsin?
Yes.
The Weisman?
Yes.
Marilyn?
Yes. Next up, town council member, administrator, and town attorney comments. Anybody have an issue that you care to raise and make comments on?
I would, and I think.
Yeah, um, as not just a council member, but also a member of the queer community in town, I'd like to request that the council issue a proclamation both recognizing and supporting Pride Month. It's currently a terrifying time in our nation as we watch state after state repeal protections and pass legislation attacked, attacking LGBT individuals. These actions by governing bodies embolden and empower those who may wish to do harm to our friends, our neighbors, and our families, because we all know and likely love someone who is gay, someone who is bi, someone who is trans. This proclamation would be a small but potentially powerful statement, letting everyone know, not here, not in Booton. Here, you are safe, you are loved, you are recognized. I am saddened by the decision of this governing body to refuse discussion on the request by Booten Rainbow Pride, and I am honestly angry that we have chosen silence in the face of oppression. It speaks volumes and it will be heard by the community, empowering those who wish harm and silencing those who need support.
Thank you for your comments. Marie?
Well, my comments are in a similar vein. I'm not quite as angry, uh, as an ally and a, a, a person who loves many, many people who are part of the community that Jake is a member of. Um, and one of those people said to me not too long ago, if you don't have to tell me you're straight, why should I have to tell you I'm not? You don't, so, and, and the answer is you don't. You shouldn't have to. And so issuing a, a proclamation, raising a flag are actions that elected officials we can, that we can take to express support for members of our community that are far too often marginalized and overlooked. Last Monday, this community gathered in a solemn commemoration of Memorial Day. We spoke the names of our war dead and we teach our children to honor their service and to seek peace. Pride is an opportunity for us to unite and recognize remarkable diversity of our community that we live in, in a time when those in power have denied the rights and the humanity of folks who are different. There are orders and declarations that send that message. The message is you are less than, you are not worthy of respect, your life does not have value. We can do better. We can join our neighbors in towns like Danville, which, which, which issued a lovely proclamation just, uh, two weeks ago by issuing a proclamation in support of our LGBTQIA community and in support of Pride Month.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I would like to say, with growing Memorial Day, um, thanks to our VFW, our, um, Fire Department, Police Department, EMS. Um, uh, it's probably my favorite celebration of the year in Booton, but I was unfortunately unable to attend. Um, uh, last year, I, um, I, I was in, attending graduation ceremony, uh, in Western Pennsylvania. So my, my apologies to especially the members of my brothers in the VFW. Um, and, uh, I have no graduations next year. Thank you.
Mayor? I could just mention one item.
Yes, uh.
I, I just want to mention, you know, when it comes to the affordable housing plan that was referenced earlier, it's not often we can tell you that there's real positive news as we all face development pressures, you know, communities do. But just for the public's, um, you know, at vacation, the obligation that was issued by the state of New Jersey to the town was a hundred and fifty-three affordable units. And the governing body adopted a resolution because you had to accept that number early on, but you also had the right to remap and come up with your own number. And this governing body then adopted a resolution saying it shouldn't be one hundred and fifty-three units for the next ten years, it should be ninety-nine. And along those lines, I think perhaps the town of Booton was the only town, but don't hold me to it. We're one of the very few, if not the only town, that actually, at the end of this hearing process, wound up with the number that this governing body concluded at ninety-nine. So, uh, again, it's not about affordable housing, it's about the fact that what comes with it is high density or multifamily development for market units. The affordable housing is the easy part at ninety-nine. It's the hard part to say for every unit, there's going to be five market units. So by going from one fifty-three to ninety-nine, that's about five or six hundred multifamily units that the town doesn't have an obligation to take a market family unit. So I just want to emphasize that because you'll hear throughout the state, uh, a lot of towns that they were challenged by the builders. We were challenged by a, uh, intervener. It was, um, the developer that, that sought to, um, develop the Riverwalk site. They, they challenged and thought our number should be a hundred and fifty-three, and so did the Builders Association. But nonetheless, we came out with exactly the number that the, the governing body approved at ninety-nine, and, uh, you, you can't do any better than that. So I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll just, Fred, just to thank you and your office and our planner as well, because that, that didn't happen by accident. Uh, so, and to explain my no vote, I, I'm, I decided I'm not voting yes on anything that involves Park Woods anywhere around it, because I think that development is a horrendous, horrendous project. Um, so I'll just say that. Uh, and then just while I'm talking, I just, I just want to thank Rabbi Levi Jabinski from Chabad. I had, right before I was here, I was up, uh, there with, uh, with them celebrating Shavuot, which is today. Uh, and so that, you know, and he asked me to stress that it's open to everybody, and we hope that, you know, certainly hope more people from the community will, will check out, uh, Chabad. It was a beautiful service today.
Thank you.
Ben, would you mind explaining very briefly what Shavuot is?
Sure, luckily I Google them, okay, I know. Uh, Shavuot commemorates the day when Jews believe that, uh, Moses received the Ten Commandments. Uh, it's, if you, if you, it, it's sort of the, the best way I can think to describe it is it's the beginning of the Jewish tradition, uh, Jewish faith, that this is sort of where, where Jews, it was more than just spiritual, actually became a, uh, a strong religious, uh, as well. And I think especially in today's world, with some of the news we've recently had and what continues to happen, it's ever more important, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Thanks. And our council?
At this point, I would open the meeting up to public comments. And if you really, uh, would like to make a statement, you're welcome to come forward. Please introduce yourself. The mic is yours for three minutes.
Jake, we may need, uh, some audio assistance.
Just press the button.
Thank you.
Good evening, Rich Parker from four-ten Lincoln Street. One question, when are we going to replace the trees along Washington Avenue? They were taken down over the years. That's it.
Try to address the questions at the end of everybody's discussion. Washington Street, you mean?
Yes.
Okay.
Right after we bury the power.
I swear I practiced to bring this under three minutes. Carol Morikoff, two fourteen Madison Street. Is that better? Okay. A short essay by Simone Kraus. Have you ever had one of those days that was absolutely perfect? We've all had them throughout our lives. They slowly fade from our memory but are easily remembered. Sometimes something happens to remind us of that day. I've had my share in this lifetime. When I was nine in a turtleback zoo, I sat on the back of a lot of stores. Or when I would visit my older cousin and me as a teenager, I can remember waking up on the second story of their hundred fifty-year-old farmhouse, looking out the window from my bed, dog hugging the ground. One of their dogs would always hop up on the bed in the middle of the night and cuddle up sleeping next to me. But this memorial, a friend of ours invited us to our farm for picnic. The sky was blue streaked with crustacean clouds, a slight breeze that kept you cool even when sitting in the sun, as well as keeping away the mosquitoes. The table was set out in the back overlooking fields of grazing goats and cows. It reminded me of my youth, youth, and smelled like the man I remembered. Hot dogs, rolls, all the fixing. Bowl of corn on the cob and a stick of butter to roll it over. Homemade potato salad, balsam and soda. White napkins that dressed up the table far more for an elegant dinner than in the field. It was after we all ate and moved over to a small hawthorn tree in a little shade, we took a seat. Mine was an old rocking chair similar to the one that my grandmother had. I lot, thought of her as I watched her friend play with her granddaughter, who had also been invited. Her daughter and son-in-law enjoyed the conversation momentarily relieved from parental duties. One of our hostesses pulls over an old antique dessert cart full of summertime treats and watermelon slices. I go for the fresh strawberries with whipped cream and pound cake. Seldom in my life have I ever felt like I fit in. I think it's a trans thing more common to late-stage transitioners. I did have one time about ten years ago, just before I transitioned, and a family Christmas celebration. It was also a magical day, but transitioning and family coming to terms with that was a one-time thing. But today I just sat there, feeling connected to each person there, more connected to other women than I have ever been. I feel I am in sync with the feminine energy for the first time, and it is bliss. My wife is sitting next to me and everyone else in a circle. I listen, not really interjecting. I look up and see a hawk catching the updraft floating a thousand feet up and more. I glance around and just absorb the moment, almost wondering if I'm dead and this is heaven. It was perfect. I glance skyward and the hawk is still catching up draft as darker clouds pass over his head and a few raindrops fall. It's days like these that as a transgender person, we should look for and grab onto. A day to relive in your memory when the times get tough. And I think there are some very tough times headed our way. So for now, I'm going to drift back to that day and have another piece of deconstructed strawberry shortcake and relive that moment of earthly perfection. It really doesn't take very much to be kind and have a profound and positive impact on someone's life. I wish for this council willingness to do so. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Time that out perfectly, Carol.
Hi, Christine Bailey, six oh five Washington Street. Um, I would just like to read you a brief definition of stigma. Let me get this down here a little more. Um, it is a negative opinion or belief about a person or a group. Booton claims to be a stigma-free town. I see signs for it at the entrances stating this noble and inclusive quality. So I'd like you to please explain why then it is so difficult to pass a pride proclamation or raise a flag to honor these vital members of our community. Perhaps we are not as stigma-free as we claim to be. Perhaps those signs should come down. Thank you for your reconsideration to declare a pride proclamation.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, my name is Ruwan Hetrick. I say them pronouns. I'm Ward Two resident on William Street. I'm also Booth Youth Service, a Booton Youth Services librarian. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I hope that you're all having a safe and healthy start to Pride Month. Bear with me, I'm here tonight with my two children because protocol observed by council bars public from making comments via Zoom. So I've already done my due diligence and have contacted my local council representatives about the issue. It is also my job to ensure that the rest of you hear the voices of those who live, work, and volunteer in town. Booten Rainbow Pride has once again submitted the proper paperwork to request the town flies the pride flag and acknowledge the Pride Month through the proclamation. Booton has a large and vibrant queer community where we do what we can to support one another, but right now it is time for you, the governing body, to do your part. As of May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five, the ACLU has tracked five hundred and eighty-eight anti-LGBTQ plus bills that have been introduced across the United States since the start of the current Trump administration. While you may be saying, not here in Booton, I would like to remind you that violence against marginalized communities starts with apathy and inaction. Last year, after you all scrapped and rewrote the flag ordinance in response to LGBTQ community requesting that they raise the red, pride, pride flag, might I add, there was an increase in pride displays being defaced and hateful anti-LGBTQ plus rhetoric being spread within the town's physical and virtual spaces. As someone who was out nearly every night, and I have two young children, maintaining and repairing pride displays that were being vandalized, I can assure you that your words and actions have a direct impact on how others behave and act. As a trans and queer town employee and resident, this saddens me that you have not made the compassionate and neighborly decision to support and care for your community members who are being targeted for the, for authentically living and being themselves. With that being said, in spite of your decision, we will continue to love, grow, create, exist, and loudly and proudly be ourselves in the town of Booton. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Considerably taller than Rue. Sorry, Rue. Uh, my name is Linda Holgaboom, Chestnut Street in Booton, and I'm here to speak for myself. Um, these actions are not unprecedented. Uh, Booton has done this already. We've had three years of pride proclamations and one year of a pride flag raising at Grace Lord Park, Mr. Mann, uh, before your administration. Uh, Mayor Lynch, it's so interesting to me that you're taking, uh, like a not-on-my-watch position and just blocking discussion. You already took away a resident's right to make public comments via Zoom. And now my ward rep on the council has been muzzled under this thinly veiled obstacle of recusal. If there's any other reasons for recusals coming up in further consent agendas, I will be taking a peek. Uh, I don't know who sits in this echo chamber that you listen to. I speak to each of you that voted no to discussion today. Um, how can you not see or hear your own community? Who, who holds the weight of your opinion? It's not these strangers in your town. You, you don't act as if you care what they have to share with you. Uh, L- Lynch, Valen, Mann, Minsin. You're fighting something that already exists in our town. This June, there are multiple drag queen events at Main Street businesses. Booten Rainbow Pride didn't do that. The townspeople did. Every year, folks reach out to volunteer. Every year, businesses display pride flags, banners. They have Pride Month specials. The townspeople do that. And the institutions and the businesses in town support the LGBTQIA plus community in Booton. I don't know when you're going to see what's been demonstrated to you in past administrations in neighboring towns on a walk down Main Street in June, past the library, past the Elks, past the businesses. The townspeople did that. Every year, our pride event brings people to town to, to shop at those businesses to economically support Main Street because Main Street supports us. I don't know who you're representing. I see your obstinance in this matter for a second year in a row. A simple show of support to the LGBTQ plus community, I don't think we can affect change on this council or under your administration, Mayor Lynch. The examples are clearly surrounding you, but you resist. So we will have this conversation again until the backlash for what was achieved on the council from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-three finally dies down. The best part is that everywhere in town, folks are doing their own autonomous, prideful actions, and we love to see that. We hope you can get with the times, get with your neighbors sooner than later. Uh, the invitation to attend Booten Rainbow Pride on June twenty-first is extended with hopeful ideals that I just can't seem to kick to the curb. Uh, we'll have a pride flag raising at the Booten Elks at eleven AM. All are welcome. And at Grace Lord Park from twelve to four, come and just get out of your echo chamber.
Thank you for comments.
Hello, everyone. Um, this is a different topic.
Can you introduce yourself, please?
What?
Introduce yourself, please.
Oh, Kathy Rockwell, fifteen, Have Good Court. So, um, the front of my house faces the cul-de-sac, but the back of my house backs up to Fanny Road. And since we moved in in two thousand eighteen, the back where the wall ends on Fanny Road and it goes to the Park Woods property, um, the dirt has been eroding every single time it rains, so it's probably eroded about maybe six feet since we moved in. So I don't know who can address that or how we can get it addressed. I actually, uh, planted Forsythia back there, about twelve plants of it. Um, the back row, they're not growing anything green this year, so I don't think that they're gonna last. So but the water just erodes the dirt every single time. And you can drive by it and see that it's really, um, back maybe about five feet. So if you could tell me who I can contact or what we can do to fix this problem, I don't think my house is gonna wash away. But the property is. And this probably addresses Park Woods' situation too, because everything is just, I mean, if you go around Fanny Road, please just take a look where the wall ends and it begins around by Hapgood Court, okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you. I'll address that when everything's done.
Personally familiar with backyards, walking away.
Afternoon, Mayor Lynch and council members. Uh, my name is Luisa F. Lopez. I live in three three seven Reserve Street. Um, I have a couple of words to say. Um, I was longtime New Jersey resident. I was born in New York, raised in New Jersey, SS County. I moved out of New Jersey in twenty eighteen, and I couldn't wait to bring my family back to New Jersey. So as we were house hunting, I accidentally drove through Booton. Um, actually, I was on my way to West Orange, my hometown, uh, coming from Pennsylvania where I lived. And I was amazed by all the pride flags. I was amazed by all the colors. Um, which was the reason why my family decided to, you know, invest our time looking in homes here in Booton. Um, when I bought our, when we closed in our first house, uh, not our first house, in Booton, uh, we were thrilled to be part of this community. Um, so to be honest and very respectfully, I want to say I I do feel a little betrayed and lied to. Um, I felt that the reason why I, you know, Booton kind of brought me to this town was because of pride flags. Um, I felt like I belonged. Um, I am an ally, um, but I'm also parents of immigrant who who migrated to this country, so I've always felt a little different. And I do feel part of the representation of the pride flags is really because it represents all of us, you know, we're all, you're all part of, you know, some color in that flag. Um, so I do want to say that respectfully, I do feel a little bit betrayed by, you know, the outcome of this meeting. Um, and I just, you know, want to go home and maybe when they explain to our kids, you know, I know we moved here for a reason, and I want to bring, you know, be able to explain to them that we can bring this back. Um, so, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Lindsay Weissman, four oh five Morris Avenue. Um, I would like to echo Linda's invitation to pride. Um, and what we're really asking for is some sort of show from the town for Pride Month. Um, and so we'd love your individual, uh, support at the event or anything. Um, we thank you, those of you who have supported us the last four years, and, um, see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi there. I'm Bruce Wigdarm from out of town in Lake Hiwatha, and I'd just like to say something very quickly. At the start of your justification for not agreeing to the proclamation, um, you said that you inherited a toxic environment, and I can't think of anything more toxic than failure to stand up for the marginalized. Thank you.
Thank you for comments. Any other members in public?
Good evening. Bruce Rockwell, fifteen, Hapgood Court. Um, seen many boards wrestle with this issue of the flag raising. Um, it's not a simple matter, you know, it's it's, uh, I hear some characterizations here about the town of Booton. Uh, I've lived here for, uh, since nineteen ninety-six. I've lived in many other places from California to Florida. Um, have family in the Midwest, and I don't think I'd live any other place than Booton, New Jersey. Uh, my oldest son happens to, uh, fly the pride flag. I work with many people that, uh, um, you know, probably participate in pride events. I I have no ill will towards these people or the atheists that my friend from Louisiana says has their headquarters here in in town. I don't know if that's true or not, but he called me one day and mentioned that. We have Muslims in this town. We have many different types of people. Um, someone who's been here since nineteen ninety-six, uh, I think this town, uh, um, is welcoming to anybody and everybody. Uh, so I just, I think that needs to be said and relative to, um, making this, uh, a political matter, I really don't think it belongs here at this board. I think if the board, uh, rules in favor of something like this, you're gonna have potentially ten, fifteen, twenty, fifty, a hundred other types of entities that want to come here and now want to fly their flags or put things up and uh, I've represented many boards and sat on many boards. And I think there's a consensus that, um, maybe the board members here, um, feel that is appropriate, but uh, the, uh, the matter of, uh, flying flags in a town is generally reserved for the American flag, the state flag, and the POW flag. And usually that's where they draw the line. And I don't think they're doing anything, uh, uh, more than just trying to hold the line and, uh, not let things get out of hand, and I don't think that means that they're disrespectful towards anybody. Uh, I know many people sitting in this room and people that came up to this mic and I think we all do well to just get along. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other members of public in attendance wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on. I believe we have some correspondence sent in to us.
Sorry. Okay, um, Deanna Cook of Reeland Avenue wrote to request that the town fly the pride flag in recognition of Pride Month. She said that by doing so, we demonstrate our shared commitment to equality and that the flag is not a political symbol, but a symbol of inclusion, dignity, and acknowledgement. Scott Scardina of Old Booton Road.
I'm sorry, just as a point of order, typically you read the emails in full, not summarized. Is there a reason you summarize that one?
Uh, I was instructed.
Okay, I I think that's inappropriate. We, in every meeting, we've read these emails in full up to the three-minute timeline. I believe we should continue doing that tonight. On our adequate notice, it says they may be summarized. We have multiple, uh, correspondence on the same issue, opposing sides, for the sense of, uh, uh, being, uh, a little more efficient, they have been summarized. I don't think it's improper. The entire council has been circulated all these emails. So it's not like you haven't read them.
I appreciate that. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we read all these emails in full today and ask for a second.
I second that.
Even be a motion to a second, and I believe that requires a roll call though. Let's get a roll call.
Uh, Mr. Balin.
Yes.
Ms. Divanazia.
Yes.
Mr. Hetrick.
Yes.
Mr. Mann.
No.
Ms. Minson.
Yes.
Mr. Uh, Mr. Weissman.
Yes.
And Mayor Lynch.
No. Guess you gotta read them.
Okay.
I'll be timing each one for three minutes.
Uh, from Deanna Cook of Reeland Avenue. I hope this message finds you well. I am writing to respectfully request that the town of Booton fly the flag, the pride flag at Town Hall during the month of June in recognition of LGBTQ plus Pride Month. By flying the pride flag, we demonstrate our shared commitment to equality and show that Booton stands with those who have historically been marginalized, not just during Pride Month, but every day. Pride flag is not a political symbol. It's a symbol of inclusion, dignity, and acknowledgement. Many LGBTQ plus individuals have served with pride, defending the very freedoms we celebrate today. By flying the pride flag, we affirm that every citizen, veteran, or civilian deserves to feel seen, safe, and valued in our community. This request is offered in the spirit of unity and patriotism, grounded in the belief that honoring diversity only strengthens the values we hold dear. Thank you for considering this request. Scott Scardina of Old Booton Road. Um, I I would like your public support in raising the pride flag in front of Town Hall. It is a simple gesture so that all members of our community can be seen and felt supportive. And from Melissa DeSalvo of Reservoir Drive. Good evening, Mayor Lynch and members of the Town Council. My name is Melissa DeSalvo, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Booton Green Team. Well, I would have loved to have been there in person. My son's baseball team is playing a game at John Hill this evening. I wanted to follow up on the email I sent on May seventeenth regarding sustainable jersey and ask if the council considered taking the first step by passing a resolution to enroll Booton in the program. It's a no-brainer for Booton. The program is free, widely respected, and opens the door to exclusive grant funding and resources that can really benefit our town. Our team is fully on board and ready to do the work. We just need that first green light from you to get started. For your convenience, I've drafted a version of the resolution for your consideration attached here. The original email is also included below for reference, and I'm happy to speak with any council member directly if you have questions. Thank you for your time and consideration. And from Courtney Scardina of Full Booton Road. Hello, I urge the council to support the raising of the pride flag outside Town Hall in honor of this year's Pride Month. Please take this opportunity to celebrate Booton's vibrant diversity by acknowledging and including all of its residents. Thank you. And from Michael Herbert of Fulton Street, Mayor Lynch and Booton Town Council members, I am writing in support of Booton Rainbow Pride's request to have the pride flag displayed on municipal property. No era of American history has passed without divisive arguments over issues related to social justice and civil rights. In history classes and in popular culture, we celebrate and uplift courageous individuals who confront injustice in their own town and in their own communities. In Booton, we celebrate people like Dr. John Grimes, James Grimes, William C. Lathrop, John Hill, and Philip Wootton, who made Booton a safe station on the Underground Railroad. When they were helping enslaved peoples escape to freedom, they were breaking the law. Now their names dawn our schools and street signs. Today, you have the opportunity to celebrate and lift up those among us who are confronting injustice here and now. Silence in the face of hate is not a neutral position. Silence embodies hateful speech. Inaction in the face of hate is not neutral. Inaction creates space for violence. I encourage you to speak up for your family members, friends, and neighbors who identify as lesbian, gay, bisexual, trans, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual. I encourage you to act to support this community by displaying the pride flag on town property and showing the world what a small town with a big heart looks like.
That's it?
Yes. Thank you, Ms.
Okay. Um, to address, uh, two questions from residents of Washington Street, um, trees that will be added to the next DPW, uh, monthly meetings agenda, as will the Rockwell washout on Have good in Fanny. Okay, thank you.
Mayor, could you announce again about the change of the polling?
Okay, um, I've been asked to remind the public that, uh, Election Day, there will not be, uh, polls here at Town Hall and the firehouse due to concerns with the safety of the parking lot, which is due to be replaced sometime after Election Day. Um, but all four wards will be voting at the senior center on North Main Street.
Mr. Mayor, could you please also add that, uh, if you are using the ballot drop box, that drop box is still in its regular location behind the building next to the fire department entrance? If you have a mail-in ballot.
I assume you heard that, but we'll all be running a
Okay, I'm sorry.
We'll also be running our 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 senior shuttle bus will be, uh, I think, taking people from this location up to the other all day long.
Yes, thank you for, thank you for making it happen.
Okay.
Early voting starts tomorrow, June eighth. For those of you who want to get a head start.
All right, and then I would call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Weissman.
Second, Divanazia.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you all for coming.